Welcome, everybody, to our first regular scheduled April City Council meeting. Today is Wednesday, April 8, 2015, and I do call this meeting to order. And as always, we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll ask Sandy to read the open meeting statement for us.
This meeting and all other meetings of the common council are open to the public. Proper notice has been posted and given to the press in accordance with Wisconsin state statutes, so that citizens may be aware of the time, place, and agenda of this meeting.
And would you take role also, Sandy?
Brian Smith.
Here.
Steve Hackett.
Here.
Deb Fenske.
Here.
Paul Hagan.
Here.
Alan Keeland.
Scott Pritchaski.
Here.
Dave Peterson.
Here.
Paul Mayo.
Here.
John Lockwood.
Here.
Gillian Peterson.
Here.
And Eric Olson.
Here.
Nine present, we have a quorum.
Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. The consent agenda is as printed unless there's something that council members would like to see moved from the consent agenda to the regular agenda. If not, we'd be looking for a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Lockwood, second by Hackett, that we approve the consent agenda as printed. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. We have a number of handouts for the regular agenda. Sandy, you want to tell us what those are?
Under number nine, new business letter H, a revised job description for the Director of Public Works was distributed. Under number nine, new business letter G, additional information was also distributed. And under number nine, new business letter I, additional information was distributed.
All right?
Uh huh.
Thank you.
Yep.
Again, unless we have other items that need to be changed or moved around, we would need a motion to approve with those additions.
So move.
Second. Motion by Fenske, second by Peterson, that we approve the, Dave Peterson, that we approve the regular agenda with those additional items. Any discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. All right, let's move on to non-agenda items and announcements. We first have our 2014 annual library report, and I see that Chairperson John Ryan is here tonight. John, welcome. Peg, you going to set them up or just let them go?
I think we should just put them up.
John, if you want to just step up to the podium for us. We have a PowerPoint, is that what's going on? Okay. See what it's like on this side of the building.
It's not over here.
Yeah. Well, I hear you guys talking.
This is the cool side of the council.
We need some filler here, Peg, while we're waiting.
Oh, well, I can.
She's got a library joke.
Thanks, Henry.
We distributed some handouts at the elections about the annual report that we thought might be of interest to all of the residents who help pay for libraries and who support libraries. So I have those, and you can take a look at those. They're based on, roughly on the.
While we're waiting, too, I just want to remind city planning members and council, too, if you're interested, our city planning is usually, is going to be on April 15. It normally would have been tonight, but since we have a council meeting, we have moved a city planning meeting to the 15th at 5:15.
I think we're good to go.
Ready? Okay. John, just introduce yourself, please.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council, city staff. I am John Ryan. I'm the Chair of the Board of Trustees of our library board, and I'm here tonight to present the 2014 annual report, which, as you've seen, is all numbers. Statistics that are gathered throughout the year by the library staff and through OWLS, that's the Outagami-Wapaka Library System.
Is that not working?
Sorry. Thanks, Peg.
Not easy to ask.
The first thing that, the first thing that the report asks for is our population base and the service area. This, of course, includes the city of Wapaka and the four surrounding townships. We also serve residents from Washeera County and Portage County and other municipalities in Wapaka County. The library is regularly open six days a week for a total of 56 hours each week. Average daily visits number over 500, and average checkout of 950 items per day. Towns of Dayton, Farmington, Wapaka, and Lind are in the service area. They also include parts of our school district. As you can see from the pie chart, they use the library at about the same rate as city We have a nine-member Board of Trustees that includes representatives from the city of Wapaka, from the city council, from the Wapaka County Board of Supervisors, the Wapaka School District, and we have a high school student through the Youth On Board program. Of those 950 items that are checked out every day, 38% go to children and teens. Our internet computers are still used heavily, but we're starting to see, or still seeing more and more people plugging into the Wi-Fi network. Thanks to OWLS, we were able to upgrade our connection points this year, this past year, and we also doubled our broadband. But we need to track the numbers differently this year because of those new connections, so comparison numbers will make more sense going forward, year to year. The way people use libraries is changing. There's more access to Wi-Fi, and the devices are more affordable, so our patrons are taking advantage of the Wisconsin Digital Library, and downloads from that have nearly doubled in 2014. We all, all the libraries in the state pay into the pool. As you can see, we contributed $2,600 or so, and with 9,650 downloads, that comes to about 28 cents per download, which is a pretty good deal. The library staff held formal classes throughout 2014, and they're always available for one-on-one help to help people connect to this system. The price of the other materials, however, has probably gone up, but the staff has taken advantage of opportunities to get grants and receive donations from the Friends of the Wapaka Library and the Wapaka Library Foundation. The funds from these sources, as well as our copy income, and some other fees totaled over $37,000 in 2014. The library is service-oriented. Employ seven full-time employees and up to 20 part-time employees, or the equivalent of 14.5 full-time positions, so it's not surprising that the staff is the biggest expense. And I would like to personally applaud our part-time workers who work without health insurance or other benefits that the full-time employees receive. When we ask our patrons what they like most about the library, the most common answer is the staff. Advocacy efforts in the last few years have resulted in support from Wapaka County at 100% of the cost of providing service to the rural patrons who choose to use our library. Washeera County is also billed for the use of our library by their residents. Thanks in large part to these contributions, the current city dollars budgeted for the library's lesson was budgeted in 2010 or 2011. Programming is a big deal here at the Wapaka Library, and the Department of Public Instruction wants us to count the heads that attend. And all the reporting requirements have changed this last year. They're now asking libraries to record the number of programs based on the intended audience, first of all. So we have programs for children up to age 11, young adults 12 to 18, and anything else that's geared toward all ages or adults qualifies as other. Another new statistic this past year is drop in program numbers, and that would apply to our exhibit room. As you can see, they had a good year, I believe a record-breaking year, and that includes when Lincoln came to town. Yet another new category is literacy offering. Our summer libraries for children, teens, and adults, and the Community Reads Program called Wapaka Reads Mockingbird were included in this category. It's defined as an umbrella event that has a committed reading component. So we had a total of four literacy offerings, and we counted the number of unique individuals We depend on community partners and volunteers to provide all these programs, one of which was in December, we celebrated the new season of Downton Abbey with a high T. Meeting rooms were transformed, and the program attendees enjoyed playing dress-up and eating little delicacies and playing Downton Abbey trivia, and ultimately watching the first episode of this popular series. A shining star of the daytime programming is the first Thursday Film Festival, a series, rather, and the February Film Series, and these are attended by those who enjoy classic film. We surveyed the participants, and it was an overwhelming response. 90% of those surveyed reported that coming to the films helped them feel more connected to the community, and 96% agreed that they had a greater appreciation for classic film and that they learned something. New programs in 2014 included Money Smart Week, Wapaka's Sustainable Table, and Makerspace. And Makerspace was a new word for me last year. It's a movement to encourage hands-on creative activity. The library held Makerspace programs out on the lawn in the summer during the farmers' markets, and also at South Park. Library held a Take a Break to Make an Apron program when the exhibit room hosted the nationally renowned Apron Project. We started two new book discussion groups to bring people together over food, books, and art. The Youth Librarian wrote a grant for LEGO Robotics, which has resulted in new coding opportunities for teens and children. And at all of these programs, there was interaction and learning happening. In May, a large carved tree was gifted from Dragon Wings Bookstore to enhance the early literacy play area, and then the Library Foundation funded the painting of a treetop mural to, and further enhance the experience, and they've become quite an attraction for Literacy was the focus of children's programming for 2014. Children and families participated in the second Iditaride program, counting the pages read in a race against mushers in Alaska. Families were invited to a monthly LEGO club, and summer reading programs were held with books as prizes to help grow family libraries. And the children's summer reading program also included a daily science experiment. Second Story Walk was added in 2014 out on the River Ridge Trail on the far east side of town, near ABC Computers and Sunny Day Daycare Center. This was made possible through partnership with the Park and Rec Department and Sunny In 2014, the teen department participated in a Spark a Reaction Summer Library Program. They rearranged their room, purchased new furniture with the help from the Library Foundation. Staff worked on a Minecraft server, and the Student Library Advisory Group worked on reorganization to become more effective. The last entry in the annual report is a statement from the library board that addresses the support that OWLS provides to our library. It's, it's an acknowledgement, and it's also a justification for the expensive membership, and I will need to read that to you. It goes, "The staff and resources of OWLS continued to provide essential services to the Wapaka area public library throughout 2014. Technical support, political advocacy, and educational opportunities for both library staff and patrons enabled our library to maintain its current high level of service and efficiency. Through its technical expertise, OWLS updated our computers, provided research assistance with our RFID project, and assisted with the purchase and installation of new wireless routers. In addition, OWLS has continued to support and monitor our internet management software, firewall, and virus protection, as well as hosting our email services, website, and info soup catalog. The resources of OWLS provided our staff and trustees with opportunities and funding for continuing education through in-person and webinar training, scholarships, and grants, as well as grants for our summer reading programs. During 2014, OWLS moved to a new interlibrary loan system that has allowed greater local control for out-of-system requests and has sought input from system libraries before making major decisions about projects and services, while continuing to contract for the transport of materials so essential to our interlibrary loan system." That system is something that a lot of people don't see happening, but there's 10,000 items a month going in and out of the back door of the library. It's amazing. This past year, we've dedicated time to plan for the future. With the help of Connie A. Bear from the UW Extension, we'll be unveiling a strategic plan within the next few months that will cover the next five years. In the meantime, the board has adopted a new mission, vision, and value statement that will guide us as we continue to strive to meet the needs of the community. So the doors are open 56 hours a week, and we welcome everybody. If you're a job seeker, wanting to fill out an application online and needing help with that, if you're a business person who wants a quiet corner to have a business conversation in, if you're a, if you need to get your homework done, or study, or write, or read, the library's there for you. Thank you. Any questions on the annual report?
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Very nice, very informative. Anybody have any comments or questions of John? All right? Thank you very much. Appreciate it. I gotta find what I had up here. Okay. I will. Okay, the next announcement in correspondence is a thank you from the Wapaka Community Arts Board. That is informational, and in your packet, it's actually on page 42. And then we have a proclamation declaring April 7, 2015 as National Service Recognition Day. Sandy, can you read that for me? Thanks. I got, I got, sorry.
Yeah. Whereas service to others is a hallmark of the American character and central to how we meet our challenges, and whereas the nation's mayors are increasingly turning to national service and volunteerism as a cost-effective strategy to meet city needs, and whereas AmeriCorps and Senior Corps participants address the most pressing challenges facing our cities and counties, from educating students for the jobs of the 21st century and supporting veterans and military families, to providing health services and helping communities recover from natural disasters. And whereas, national service expands economic opportunity by creating more sustainable, resilient communities and providing education, career skills, and leadership abilities for those who serve. And whereas, AmeriCorps and Senior Corps participants serve in more than 60,000 locations across the country, bolstering the civic, neighborhood, and faith-based organizations that are so vital to our economic and social well-being. And whereas, national service participants increase the impact of the organizations they serve with, both through their direct service and by recruiting and managing millions of additional volunteers. And whereas, national service represents a unique public-private partnership that invests in community solutions and leverages non-federal resources to strengthen community impact and increase the return on taxpayer dollars. And whereas, north, or national service participants demonstrate commitment, dedication, and patriotism by making an intensive commitment to service, a commitment that remains with them in their future endeavors. And whereas, the Corporation for National and Community Service shares a priority with mayors nationwide to engage citizens, improve lives, and strengthen communities, and is joining with the National League of Cities, City of Service, and mayors across the country to recognize the impact of service on the Mayor's Day of Recognition for National Service on April 7, 2015. Therefore, be it resolved that Brian Smith, the mayor of the city of Wapaka, hereby proclaim April 7, 2015 as National Service Recognition Day, and encourage residents to recognize the positive impact of national service in our city, to thank those who serve, and to find ways to give back to their communities.
Thank you, Sandy. I couldn't have said it any better. Thanks. Appreciate it. Okay, moving on, then we have public input tonight. This is a time of the meeting where if we have anybody in the audience, or staff, or council members that would like to speak to us on an item that is not on our agenda, just please give your name and address and, for the record, and keep your discussion to three minutes or less. Anybody in the audience?
Hi, I'm Russ Budkowitz. I'm actually here to talk about, I think it's Item K on the agenda with regards to the OWLS natural area. I come to the council today just to render some comments regarding this proposal.
Go ahead.
This is a, this is a piece of property that my wife and I donated back in 1997, and in honor of her father, Dr. Victor Esmondson, and Nancy Salin. And we donated this with the idea of this being a natural area with minimal interference as possible, developments to be limited to interpretive signs, a wetland boardwalk, restroom facilities, a parking area, amphitheater, and a shelter system. And we've been sitting on a committee, Scott Pritchaski's on this committee, Aaron Jensen has been helping us manage this. CAP Services has come forth with the proposal to construct some structures on the site, and we have been in discussion in the, in the committee about this. And essentially, the, the structure, there's a large structure that's been proposed, there's a small structure that is partially constructed on the site, and originally, the intent was for the small structure to be completed and to see whether we were getting appropriate public use of the smaller structure before venturing out to the larger structure. We'd also wanted to get a boardwalk constructed through part of the marsh, and, and a test piece has been put up, but the concerns that I have relate to the location of the proposed larger structure, that it appears, as it is now staked out on the site, that it's going to end up bisecting the trail, that it's going to obstruct the view of, of the marsh and the, the parking lot, or the marsh and the, and the woods behind it from the parking lot, and that I think it, it may end up being more of a visual deterrent than, than a benefit. And there's also this, the boardwalk that's been, that's been put in as a test spot has some gravel fill that's been in place, and I have some pictures here if anybody is interested in that. And that gravel fill is actually in the, the wetland area itself, which is probably a violation of state law, that there's no, there's been no permit that I know of to put fill in the wetland there. So I think that part of this is that going forward, there has to be very close supervision by the, by the city to make sure that things are, are done correctly. My wife and I have been out there, and I think, Aaron, you've been out there as well?
Yep.
Yeah. That we're looking at, at a potential alternative site for the, the larger structure. And I guess with, with that in mind, my, I would, I would like to ask the council to, if they're going to approve the, approve the item, that there be some, some provision to, to make sure. to, to make sure that this comes back to our committee so that we can relook at the location, because looking at it in actuality compared to what was, what appeared to be proposed on the map, it looks like a vastly different thing. So I'd, I'd like to have it come back to our committee so that we could discuss it further before, before making final decisions. Is that under three minutes?
Except for the last question.
Yeah, no, you're fine.
Thank you.
So, anybody want to see photos?
Sure, if you want to just pass them around, that would be fine. Okay, is there anybody else in the audience, or council, or staff members that would like to speak to us on a non-agenda item?
Yes.
Okay.
You asked me last time, now I came prepared.
All right.
Okay, I have a couple of things, and I will try to keep this limited. Steve asked me to remind everybody that next week is Severe Weather Awareness Week. There's a statewide tornado drill next Thursday, and they are doing this all over the state between 1:00 and 2:00. You might hear it on your radio, you might hear it on your weather radio, if you're signed up for Code Red, you might hear it on your phone, so be prepared for that. The tornado sirens will sound at 1:45 all over the state next Thursday. Also tomorrow night, from about 6 o'clock to, they tried to keep it an hour and a half, but I said 6 to 8, at the high school PAC is a weather spotters class, this is open to the public, they're very interesting, if you'd like to go, just go, you don't have to sign up for anything. And also, he wanted me to remind everybody, if you want to get notification, bad weather, things like that, on your phone, sign up for Code Red. This is something that you can find on the city website, there's a button for it there, county website, there's a button for it there. It'll walk you through the steps, what kind of notifications do you want to get? The other day, a lot of people were woken up at 4:30 in the morning because of the high-speed chase through Wapaka County. Now, the reason they did that was they needed to do a 10-mile radius around the site of the crash because the person had escaped. They did not want to wait until 6:30 or when everybody was awake, because the person could have gotten away. So that's why. So we don't want to see people dropping out of Code Red. And if you have any questions, please call Steve, or call Eric Halverson at the county. Okay?
All right.
Okay. Now, you guys know me well enough that when I get fired up about something, I have to say something, and I definitely know that this is going to fire me up. Storage space in this building is at a premium. We cannot be storing things that do not belong here. So I need to know, why are we storing prom dresses in the city storage room? I'd like to know why. I know we had a prom exchange, prom dress exchange on the 20th of March, 19 days ago, get them out of here, they don't belong in there. Also, there's some shopping carts from Pick 'n Save in the city store room. The doors open, have a look. If it's for food for two times a year, I'm sure somebody would lend us a shopping cart. It's taking up a lot of room. Now, I took pictures of all of this. We also have some totes that are in front of electrical panels, so I would really like to have Jeff Olson do a walk through this building, both sides, to see where we're in code, where we're not. Also, I need to know, and this is, this is very angry, or makes me very angry, that I have to ask, are our employees allowed to come to city meetings? Open to the public meetings? I would think so. That's not the case. So what I need to know is what do I do to file a personnel complaint? Who do I go to? This all came up today, I need to do this. Also, I would, because of what I was told today by city employees, I would like all city employees to sign a date saying they have read and understood the code of ethics. That piece of paper should be filed in their files. This includes all of us, this includes anybody who is paid by the city. Okay, now I'm off in my big soapbox.
Okay. Thanks, Deb. I know Henry is making some notes, so we can address those. We'll, we'll discuss what you talked about. I think it's actually a good idea that we have our fire chief go through the building. He does do inspection, or he's required to do an inspection of all public and, and private businesses within the city every year. So he does go through here once a year, and it's about this time, too.
But Henry, if you want me to stop in tomorrow, I can do that.
I'm not sure about your other comments, and maybe you could talk to Henry about those, too, before we, before we talk about them at this level.
Okay.
There could be more to it than what you're-
I'll call you in the morning.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yep.
Anybody else that would like to speak to us on public input items? All right, let's move on to unfinished business. We have Resolution Number 1348. This is a final resolution authorizing sidewalk and curb and gutter improvements and levying a special assessment against benefit property and report on proposed special assessments for public improvements against properties located in the city of Wapaka. John, one of many items you might have tonight.
Well, this is less exciting of a topic, but this is the last step in passing a final resolution for our utilizing police powers to assess for public improvements, and this specifically is for a sidewalk replacement and new curb and gutter installation. We've gone through the state statutory requirements of a public hearing, notification of the property owners, and those were held, and this is the, again, the final resolution, it's on page 48 of your packet, and the report is on page 49. And then we will generate a final report once the work has been completed to identify costs for the property owners. I guess that's it, but Mayor, we do need action on this tonight. It is spelled out with seven items, specifically, the identifies the report, identifies that we will supervise construction, with the assessment is 50% of the cost for sidewalk replacement and 100% of the cost for new curb and gutter installation. And those are areas that do not have curb and gutter. This is two properties that we are assessing that do not have those improvements, so because of our ordinance requirements, the inclusion of that on Hillcrest will require them to pay that. And we have met with those property owners specifically in person. It identifies billing procedures, assessment procedures on how that can be paid out over a period of time. So our staff does recommend action on this tonight, Mayor.
Okay. Thanks, John. You heard John's comments, and we are looking for a motion to approve this resolution.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 1348.
Second.
Motion by Lockwood, second by Jillian Peterson, that we approve of Resolution Number 1348, 2015. Any discussion?
John, I see one Hillcrest property on here, Repco, what you've mentioned two, which-
Yeah, the other property has a Center Street address. It's on this, it's on page 50 on the report. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions, discussion? If not, Sandy will call the roll.
Scott Pritchardski.
Aye.
Deb Fenske.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
John Lockwood.
Aye.
Jillian Peterson.
Aye.
Steve Hackett.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
And Eric Olson.
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
Okay, and you want to just keep going?
Sure.
Yeah, thanks, John.
Next item is Emerald Ash Borer Management Plan. This is found on page, beginning on page 51 of your packet. Just to give you a little background on this, I don't know if, how many of you are familiar with Emerald Ash Borer. This is an insect that's an invasive insect from Asia that came into the U.S., they figure around 2002, and it's become very destructive due to lack of predators. And we have seen this, as of 2014, it was in 27 Wisconsin counties. It's moving from east to west throughout the U.S. It's as close as Appleton right now. So we're trying to be proactive with a management plan. Now, this should be a plan that hopefully we can adopt tonight, but it's something that we modify or can reevaluate over a period of time as the Emerald Ash Borer gets closer. The city may want to take different levels of action, and it's kind of all spelled out in the, in the management plan. And there are some recommended actions to take at the back of this plan. Russ Montgomery put together this initial draft of the plan, getting assistance from the DNR, and myself and Roger Hanson have gone over it. We've modified the plan to a point where we think we should take, we would like the council to take action on it tonight. And again, the nice part, let me just give you just a couple highlights here. Ash trees, only about 8% of our street trees are ash trees, and 14% of our, what we call managed park trees are ash. So these would be areas that we, in the parks, that we would cut the grass or manage the grass, what we call managed. We don't know necessarily what percentage of our wooded parkland, that's unmanaged parkland, is ash tree. However, once Emerald Ash Borer does come into our area, it will most likely wipe out the, the ash that are susceptible to it. So that being said, 8% of our street, street trees would account for 61 street trees, and of the 61 street trees, 16 of them are on Main Street, on the four blocks of Main Street. So those are probably up for consideration with a Main Street project down the road. So I think we're very fortunate that, that we don't have hundreds or thousands of ash tree that, that, you know, are susceptible down the road here. However, we still have put together this plan, and if you turn to, and find the page here, it's quite a bit of information here on it, and it identifies different options for action. If you go to page 58, and specifically 59, 59 identifies goals and recommendations from the Emerald Ash Borer Management Plan. So these would be items that we would suggest that the city start to look at. Establish easy access to the city website for public concerning all aspects of city forestry, including recommended trees for planting, pest and disease information, such and such. So some of this is informational, it's trying to inform the public of, of the concerns that are out there, and quick links for them to get information on Emerald Ash Borer. And we can do all that we can on our Parkway trees and our park trees, but they're still private trees. So I think really, if you, if you look at these management plans, there are elements that do, there are elements that you can treat trees, however, it's very costly, and probably not a good management plan unless there's specific ash trees that you want to preserve for various reasons, or attempt to preserve. It, it does more to try to spread out the impact of the Emerald Ash Borer, and once it's in the area, you most likely want to try to replace out a number of those trees over time, so that you're not seeing 61, you know, street trees removed at one time, and a bunch of park, managed park trees, and a bunch of parkland trees. I mean, that, that's the impact that you're trying to avoid. So another item is update the tree inventory on our city GIS mapping, increase annual tree removal and replanting, especially ash trees. Consider the pros and cons of treatment of all trees rated good to preserve them while not treating ash rated fair and poor. So again, it, it only is looking at this plan at this point to consider the pros and cons of treatment. Obviously, the cons identify costs and likelihood of that tree surviving in the long run. Review replacement or elimination of the Main Street ash trees, and I think that's something that will, will take place as that project proceeds. Increase species diversity, specifically limiting the number of maple trees that we plant annually, because we have a higher percentage of maple trees in our public stock. Provide annual chainsaw safety and tree planting training. Establish an estimate of ash trees on private property and unmanaged city parkland, again, look at, just attempt to estimate what the number of trees in our whole community is. Update tree-related ordinances, which we actually, we'll see some information on a little bit later. Evaluate wood disposal options at the recycling center. Update risk tree condition assessments, and increase annual forestry budget to provide funding for all these above activities. So it's, again, at this point, with this recommendation in the, in the plan, it's, there's information sharing, there's evaluation, and looking at some of the poorer-shaped trees, and maybe prioritizing them if we can for replacement, starting in the next several This takes us through page 60, and then the next item that we have on the agenda is page 61, the resolution. So Mayor, unless there's questions, I guess our staff would recommend that the council does take action on this Emerald Ash Borer Management Plan.
Okay, you heard John's recommendation. Do we have a motion?
I'll move.
I'll move.
We have a motion by Olson, second-
Second.
-by Dave Peterson, that we approve of the management plan for the Emerald Ash Borer. Any questions, discussion? If not, Sandy will call the roll.
Jillian Peterson.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Scott Pritchardski.
Aye.
Deb Fenske.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
John Lockwood.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
And Steve Hackett.
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
Okay, the next item, Item B, Resolution 1350, 2015, it's found on page 61. This is the resolution form, then, to implement the plan. As you can see, the, the resolution is, is relatively generic, and identifies wheresses and policies that identify the, the city's intent to take proactive approach with EAB infestation, the, to distribute the cost over a period of time and that. And then the sections really identify that the plan complies with the DADCAP regulations, remove trees as the budget allows, remove public ash trees to replace with non-host species trees, and create and maintain an information page on our website. So again, this, this resolution supports the plan and formalizes it from the city standpoint. And we would need action on that as well, Mayor.
Okay, you see the resolution on page 61, and John's recommending that we approve that resolution. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion, we approve Resolution Number 1350.
Second.
Motion by Hackett, second by Lockwood, that we approve of Resolution Number 1350, 2015, implementing City of Wapaka Emerald Ash Borer Resolution. Any discussion? If not, Sandy will call the roll.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Jillian Peterson.
Aye.
Steve Hackett.
Aye.
Deb Fenske.
Aye.
Scott Pritchardski.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
And John Lockwood.
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
Okay, the next item is found on page 63, this is Item C, 9C. We are recommending, then, the, that ordinance number 20215, this will be the first reading of this ordinance, so we can have discussions on it tonight, and as well on April 21st, which would be the second reading of the ordinance. And this, this is a modification to what we will call our, our forestry ordinance. It's also, it's, it's, it is identified as public nuisances and tree shrubs and other vegetation. We've reviewed the current ordinance and made some changes. You can see, starting on page 63, some of the changes, or the changes identified in color, red, mark out, strike out, or additions. You can see some of the modifications that we're recommending, some old language, some of this dates back to, oh, before 2000 even, older than that. of this dates back to before 2000 even, longer, older than that. We've updated some language, added some terminology to try to make it better defined, issues that we kind of have dealt with in the past. See if there's really anything else. We've taken out some items that relate to permitting that we don't, that we don't utilize. And on page 71, we've converted, there was language in here that related to violations of the ordinance, and the dollar amounts were stated specifically in here, and we have modified, that are recommending to modify it to be an ordinance violation, which we utilize in other sections of the code, and those ordinance violation numbers change over time. So, the violation of anything in this chapter would be an ordinance violation, which falls in line with other ordinances that we've identified. Identified dangerous disease trees, again, these are, in the practical management of these ordinances, trying to make it clear, so areas that we've had concerns with or haven't been clear in our enforcement, this will assist our staff in doing that. And that runs through page 73. Are there any questions specifically on the proposed modifications?
John, who's our city forester?
Well, that can be designated by council, but the Public Works Director has been that. While I've been acting as city forester, I've utilized obviously Roger Hanson, Russ Montgomery. We've utilized Building Inspector to identify dead trees, so it's, or designee that we've utilized that as well. And it's been a team approach in addressing all these matters.
Anybody else have any questions on it? As John said, this is a first reading of this ordinance, and we will vote on this at the next council meeting, and it will be on the consent agenda unless a council member would like to see it put onto the regular agenda. So, look forward at the consent agenda.
I guess personally, Mayor, I don't see anything really controversial here, but we wanted to, you know, go ahead and update this ordinance for a number of different reasons.
Okay. Well, thanks, John.
Okay. The next item then is found on page 74, and in that ordinance, which is our current ordinance, we identify a list of recommended trees in our ordinance, and that it's reviewed and approved by the city council, and we'd like to update that list. We have gone through this. This is a list that has been prepared by UW Extension for our class or zone for planting. We have two lists, what we call smaller Parkway trees, where we've identified for planting under power lines, and then normal Parkway trees. There really is no identification on these trees whether they're available or not, or the likelihood of being able to purchase, and it may not be an all-inclusive list, but it's a list that we work with property owners on. If a tree is not on this list, we want to make sure that it's appropriate, and specifically the smaller Parkway trees are important, because we don't want to put a large tree to grow under a power line. So, we're very aware of that when we approve tree plantings in the Parkway. We are also, obviously, the ash trees and maple trees, we have de-emphasized or removed from the list, again, to address some of our concerns with those two. The nice part about the list that we did get from the extension, and we've edited, is that it's descriptive. It explains, explains the type of tree, the growing habits, the soils, and that, those aspects, which is helpful in, again, working with property owners or our staff in coming up with the best trees to plant. So, I would need action on that, Mayor, tonight, and that's just approval of this recommended tree list.
John, let me ask you, well, let's do the motion, yeah. Do we have a motion?
I make a motion we approve this list.
Second.
Okay. We have a, thanks, Steve. We have a motion by Hackett, second by Lockwood, that we approve the recommended public street and smaller Parkway tree list. Any discussion? John, since it is the Parkway, they have to get, homeowners would have to get approval from the city anyways before they...
Yeah. And we've modified, they're, I think in some of the languages of our previous ordinance, we talked about permits, or, you know, we've used some other sample, looked at other sample ordinances, but it requires permission from the city to plant that, and that's correct. And we haven't had problems with homeowners on that, that, you know, we've worked well with them on that. And when a tree is removed from the Parkway, for whatever reason, dead or whatever, we'll work with that property owner and ask them the type of tree that they're interested in, and making sure it's an appropriate tree for that location.
Sure.
I have one quick question.
Go ahead.
Are there any cities, or cities, streets not allowed on here, or is it allowed all over the city?
Any, any streets that we don't allow planting on?
Yeah.
With a narrow Parkway, we do recommend that we do not plant on narrow Parkways. We have worked with the property owners on those at times in putting a Parkway tree, if they had one that died, maybe putting it up on their property in lieu of that.
Okay.
But, yeah, narrow Parkways are a problem, and there will be times we will not recommend planting.
Okay. Thanks.
Anybody else have any questions?
John, if a homeowner wants to plant plants in the Parkway, what is, is there a maximum height that they can?
Yeah, that is in the proposed ordinance. Remember, inches or? Yeah, we modified that ordinance a while back. Let me see if I can find it.
Are there any restrictions to how many here?
No. It's really a height issue for vision pulling out of driveways. See if I can find it here.
In other words, if I wanted to plant some flowers in the Parkway, that would...
That would be a concern, yes. We do have a height restriction.
Sorry, John, if you find it, let...
Yeah, I can, I can let you know. I believe it's, I believe it's 18 inches. I know it's, I mean, it does allow plants, flowers, and that type of thing, but not... Okay. I can find that palm, let you know.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else have any questions on this recommendation? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried.
Okay. The next item then would be 9E, approve of wheel loader bid. This is on page 83 of your packet. We did take bids on the wheel loader. We are replacing out an existing 1995 Volvo wheel loader. This was included in the approved street 2015-16 Street Capital Budget. We received five bids, airing equipment of DePere, Brooks Tractor of Plover Swaderski of Mozeny, Fabco, Schofield, and Miller Bradford of DePere. And we had, obviously, an array of bids. We bid out the loader, a lifting arm attachment that you can lift items with, forklifts for the wheel loader, and a plow wing, which is what we have on our current wheel loader. It's a front plow and a side wing that will allow us for snow removal, to perform snow The city plans to sell the current Volvo wheel loader on an auction, as we have done our other items, and we've had very good success with that. The existing wheel loader, we would expect probably $25,000 to $30,000 online. We would expect it also, they would purchase it outright right now for $15,000. We did not include that as an item on the bid, however. So, on the expense side, on page 84, if we were to purchase the airing, which is the low bidder, at $176,791, funding for that, we budgeted $150,000 in the capital budget for the wheel loader. We did, in the budget, identify trade-in, that we would be trading in a piece of equipment, and that was the net. However, we have not done that auction online. We do not want to auction our current wheel loader until we have the new one received. But at this point, $150,000 budgeted, again, the online auction. We recently sold a hauling truck on March 30th for $10,928, our old hauling truck, if you recall. And, again, we expect online auction for the Volvo between $25,000 and $30,000. You know, we know, like I said, airing has offered us $15,000 for that Volvo as it is right now. So, even if we were to take that price, and they'll continue to offer us that if we were to take that, we'd be at $175,000, $176,000, almost the price of the wheel loader as So, I don't think there's really too much of a risk from a cash flow standpoint, or from a funding standpoint. It is a cash flow issue, however, to fund this. We do recommend, though, that the council does approve purchase of the wheel loader with attachments to be awarded to airing equipment in the amount of $176,791. We could take delivery of the wheel loader prior to the wing and snowplow, and we would not have to pay for that wing and snowplow until we receive it, and I believe that's 250 days out from the date of order for the wing and plow. So, if we don't order it, however, it's 250 days from the day that you order it. So, we could take delivery of the wheel loader and put that up for auction, and it's possible that that could actually be auctioned off and sold prior to us receiving delivery of the wing and plow. But tonight, we do need to take action on this item so that we can fund it and put that order in.
John, is there any difference in warranty for first and second, or?
I don't believe so. We did, Roger did take some of the staff and looked at both the Volvo and the John Deere, operated both pieces of equipment, and, you know, the Volvo is a, is a very nice wheel loader, and, you know, we don't have any reservations on it. I don't believe the warranties are any different.
The only warranty was different was Fabco 51. The loader is 120 days out, plow and wing is booked.
Okay. Scott?
John, originally, were we always going to buy the plow and the attachment with this? I guess I don't recall. I just recall wheel loader being budgeted, which means wheel loader bucket. Am I wrong?
Well, I don't think we identified attachments at that time. We budgeted, if you look at our budget and the way it was set up, it was $150,000 with trade-in.
Right.
So, we expected, we expected that we'd have monies available beyond the $150,000. I mean, that's how it was budgeted. Now, maybe that needs to be budgeted differently in the past, or in the future, I'm sorry, but, I mean, we expected to be in the $170 range, you know.
I guess I didn't realize that. With the $150 budget, I was concerned where we'd come up with the extra, if this wheel loader doesn't sell for the proposed $25,000 to $30,000.
The way, it wasn't budgeted at $170,000 and then expecting a $20,000 revenue. It was a net.
Okay.
And if you look in the budget, that's how it was identified and brought forth. Like I said, maybe you want to do that differently with all equipment? I don't know.
Okay. It'd be up to Kathy to...
Kathy, or Ball, you want to say something first?
I have a question for John. Does the current wheel loader have the same attachments? And if it does, are they compatible with the new wheel loader? And if they are, is there a reason we're not just using them?
Our 1995 Volvo does not have those attachments. Right. Yeah. The forks would be, as Roger said, the forks would be something that we would be replacing out.
We have two sets of forks. They fit on both loaders we have now.
Roger, do you mind if you just step up to the podium for us, so we can hear you better, and get you on tape?
We have two sets of forks. We would have. We have one set now that works on both loaders, the New Holland and the Volvo. They will work on both. The equipment on this loader will also work on the loader that we're keeping, the New Holland, so.
All right. Any other council members? Kathy?
In part of my financial review of the capital improvement purchases, it's going to be my recommendation that we're going to borrow, when I come next meeting, for the state trust fund loan for the 2015 equipment, the full amount of that, only because the auction is, to me, not a done deal until after the purchase is done. And I would rather see, in the future, that we do budget for the gross amount of, and not really budget that we're going to be using any sale of any equipment. That, to me, I would rather see that if we do sell a piece of equipment, that that goes and be set aside in a reserve, so that if we do have any emergency purchases in the future, that we have cash available within that fund. So, my recommendation would be is that the council did approve a certain dollar amount level to be borrowed from the trust fund, and my recommendation is going to be that we'll just have to take money from the 2016 projects that, to fund anything over, with this, and the same thing with the streets. So, I think going forward, that we'd be a little bit more prudent and conservative in our budgeting, that if something is doing it, we're not going to assume that we're going to get $30,000. So, I think my recommendation would be is, if you authorize the purchase, and it's at the full amount, and that the funding come from the state trust fund loan that we're going to be borrowing later this month. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments?
I guess I'm a little confused about that.
So, what Kathy is suggesting is, is that we, if we approve this bid, airing's equipment of DePere, that the amount is not to exceed $176,791, and that would be what we would be borrowing. Instead of the $150,000, which is proposed in the budget, we'd actually be borrowing Now, remember, when we did our capital plan for 2015, we had, we had amounts that, it was a two-year capital plan for 2015 and 2016, and we're, it looks like we're going to get a lot more in 2015 than we are going to for 2016. You've saw that through a couple of other items that we had already. So, when, I guess, and I don't disagree with Kathy, what we decide to do with that auction money, once we do sell the '95 Volvo wheel loader, I mean, we have some options. We can leave it in reserves, and we wouldn't have to borrow as much next year, because we'd have that in reserves. We could pay off debt with it. We could pay that debt off, because the state trust fund does not have any prepayments. So, I mean, it might be short-term, and we might be able to pay it back. Those are all things that council can talk about at a future date, but what she is saying is, is the sure thing is, is it's going to cost $177,000. So, that's what we should be borrowing, is that dollar amount, and it makes sense to me. Okay? Anybody else have any? Claire's Mudd?
Claire's Mudd.
All right. Good enough. Do we have a motion on this? Anybody?
I make a motion we buy the wheel loader of, from airing equipment at $176,791.
Okay. We have a motion by Hackett, second by Olson, that we approve of the wheel loader bid from airing, airing equipment of DePere, Wisconsin, for an amount not to exceed $176,791. Any discussion?
I have another question for John. Concerning the Fabco bid at $190,000 with a five-year warranty, is it five, extra four years worth $14,000?
I don't, I don't think so. I mean, we, with our current Volvo that we've had, again, that's a '95, that's 20 years that we've had that piece of equipment. It's been a good operating piece for us. It is up there in age, and, you know, we're starting to see problems, and we rely pretty heavily on these pieces of equipment. And we rely pretty heavily on these pieces of equipment. You know, if it's down and there's a snowstorm, it's going to affect us. No, I, I, I would not recommend spending that extra 14,000 for the extra warranty.
John, because we'll have a plow unit with this loader, are we going to be cutting back maybe on future, well, maybe you won't, but the future public works director, cutting back on plow truck purchases? Seems now this loader will be able to plow also, or is it just...
Well, I think it, it'll allow us a little more flexibility in how we operate, maybe especially in the downtown area. I don't know necessarily that we would not have a plow truck. Our plow trucks have plow routes, and, and it might modify a smaller truck purchased down the road or something of that nature. But, no, I, I don't anticipate that it's going to affect our large plow trucks, but it may, may affect something else down the road. I, we'll, we'll have to see. But it's going to give us quite a bit of flexibility to utilize those wheel loaders as a, with a wing and a plow. And they're quick connects. You can take it off quickly and put a bucket on there. You know, it, it allows us a lot of flexibility during, during a snowstorm.
Now, don't you use one of these loaders to run the blower, or am I wrong about that?
We use the, the Ford New Holland tractor, the large blue tractor.
All right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and that's a dual-purpose piece of equipment for us, which allows us to use the wheel loader for snow removal. Yeah.
Any other questions, discussion? If not, Sandy will call the roll.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
John Lockwood.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Steve Hackett.
Aye.
Scott Pachatsky.
Aye.
Julian Peterson.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
And Dabenski.
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
Paul, Roger found it in the, our first reading of our forestry ordinance. Any and all vegetation planted in public areas shall not exceed height of 24 inches, excluding tree, street trees. So you can grow any type of plantings below 24 inches.
Thank you.
Do they make pygmy sunflower?
Okay. The next item is ordinance number 0315. Let's see, that's on page 85. It starts in 85. Again, this is a first reading of this ordinance. And there's a number of different items that we've modified. We've repealed the current sewer use regulations and rewritten the code, as you see here. A couple of different things. One thing that we did is, as you recall, we passed a, last fall, last December, a agreement, modified agreement with the Chain Lake Sanitary District. And there are a lot of new elements and new aspects and updated areas in that agreement that we are now reflecting in our sewer use regulation. So we're bringing this back up to speed from, you know, again, from an old ordinance. And updating terminology, updating the language, again, from the Chain Lake Sanitary District Agreement. There are other aspects that we're, we're adding. We've modified that soil and grease, grease. We've modified, again, terminology to, to update that again. And once you get past that, there's aspects that are in our, our, DNR regulated discharge permit that, for instance, you've heard us talk about Mercury, Mercury Pollution Prevention Program. That's addressed in our ordinance. The next step in that pollution prevention plan with the DNR is to regulate amalgam separators. And, and that's specifically for the dentists in our area. So we've sent that out. We actually sent a letter to all the dentists in our discharge area notifying them of these changes, and notifying them of this meeting and then the second reading. So they have, if they have comments, they can make comments regarding that. Again, some of it is terminology, some of it is updating to meet our ordinance, our, our discharge permit. Again, like I said, the amalgam management was a large section. We modified some terminology to make it clear as to the responsibility of the private property owner versus the city in backups and, and maintenance and repair. We had a section that we've modified on septic tank sludge and holding tank wastewater disposal. I mean, pretty exciting stuff. But again, it's, as we've done with other ordinances in the past with the city, there were two or three different reasons for us to go after and modify the ordinance. And once we, we knew we wanted to do that, we then updated the entire ordinance to, to bring it up to current codes and standards. Mayor, I can answer any questions on it specifically. I know it's a lot to read, and, you know, I can, obviously, this is our first reading, so this will be taken up at our next council meeting as well.
Okay. Thanks. Anybody have any questions of John right now? Well, you have two weeks to understand all the terminology and get through this whole thing.
Yeah. Well, it's taken, yeah, and it's taken us a while to get to this point. But again, I, I would say that, I don't, I don't see that there's anything necessarily very controversial here. The pollution prevention plan, the amalgam separators are required by, by the DNR for us to proceed with this program. The Wisconsin Dental Association supports it. And we, we have several of our dentists that are already in compliance. And this gives them then a period of time to come into compliance, and we can work with them on that, that plan as well. I believe November 1st, they have to comply with the amalgam separators.
Okay. Excuse me, Mayor. And John, just to, to verify, this, it's on page 101, the Part 1, City will pack a wholesale user charge system. Again, this reflects the Chain Lake's agreement and all the study of, of the cost of running the system, correct?
Yeah. Yeah, if you go back to Appendix A, which is on page 108, that describes, and this, again, comes in compliance with, as Henry said, the Chain Lake Sanitary District. This identifies how we, how we go through a user charge system, how we break up our costs. We break them up into fixed fees and variable fee that are volume-based. So if you read through that Appendix A, it, there's a lot of information there, but when it boils down to the last several pages, let's see if I can find it here. Okay, if you look at page 117, which is Table 6, those are what are identified as our fixed costs. It's 954,000 a year on fixed costs. It relates to either replacement funds, putting aside monies, debt retirement costs, and property and liability and tax expenses. So these are fixed costs, no matter if we treat one drop of wastewater or not. That then identifies through meter size, we identify our fixed charges that you receive on your sewer bill every month. So that's a fixed dollar amount. And that's, and if you read through that, you can, you can see, depending on the size of your meter, you pay a fixed fee. And then Table 8 on page 118 identifies variable costs. And this relates to the volume, how much volume of waste that you generate. And all our other costs, other than what are in our fixed, are all put into the variable cost basis. And that's just over a million dollars. That million dollars, then, is worked backwards to identify a volume charge. And it also is related to concentration of the pollutants, but, so this is the basis for our billing. This mirrors what we do in water, and that's important because with our water system, we're regulated by the Public Service Commission. I mean, they regulate all of this. Where the sewer utility, we have much more flexibility in how we bill out. But we use the same philosophical basis for sewer billing as we do for water, which we are regulated on. So again, with water, you have a fixed charge, a volume. Sewer is the same, fixed charge, volume, and it's the same, same basis.
John, these tables are actual amounts here. How often do they get changed? If it's part of the ordinance, are they changed annually?
No, no. We, we, we do an evaluation probably every five years or so. I mean, when we do a rate study, this is what you would do in a rate study. You would update these tables.
Okay.
So...
So there's no need to change them unless you're, you're changing the rate?
Well, if you change, even if we change the rate, let's say we have a 3% increase in our, our sewer utility, it's just a, an ordinance change. This, these don't set the rates, is an example of how they're calculated, this appendix. And it's important to have that. We can always amend the rates and have a 3% increase, 4% increase. Tables won't catch up to it, but it's still the basis is, how, the philosophical basis of billing is still here.
Anybody else have any questions? Again, this is a, a first reading of this ordinance, 0315. If not, John, you want to move on?
Okay. And the last item I have tonight is 9G, which is found on page 121 of your packet. Some slides real quick, and I will try to be brief.
John, is this history lesson you give us on here, is that all accurate?
Well, I hope so. I got to have a little fun. So we should quiz everybody and see if they looked up Archimedes.
Is that spelled correctly?
With spell check, it's all spelled correctly. Then I'll, I'll go back to my memo. But these are what are called screw pumps. Again, as, as Steve, I probably paid Steve some money to say that, but these are Archimedes screws. These are screw pumps that were, I think, invented in 700 B.C. And it's like a corkscrew that turns and pulls water up with it as it turns. Very basic, simple design. This was, these were built about 20 years ago at the treatment plant. There's 25 horsepower motors on each of the screw pumps. We operate one at a time. One is adequate. I don't know if they've ever, Jeff, have you ever operated two, maybe in a real heavy flow? We have to operate both. But typically, I will only operate one, one pump at a time. And that screw is constantly turning. A 25 horsepower motor is turning a large screw. This lifts about 16 feet up into the air and starts the entire process at the wastewater treatment plant, where it flows by gravity all the way out from there. So this is the main lift that creates then the treatment plant.
John, what did they use to power those things in 700 B.C.?
A hand, I think. Camels. Lot of slaves.
Slave lever.
Time to, good time to time out.
These are, again, 20 years old. They're in need of rehabilitation. And we, we have it in the approved capital for 2015, replacement of one of the screw pumps or rehabilitation of one of the screw pumps. And then in 2016, we had programmed rehabilitation of the second screw pump. These are the 25 horsepower motors up on top that's lifting the waste. Again, this is up on top. You can see it's a very corrosive environment. We, some of the orders from the plant are, are generated by this, these pumps because of the agitation of the waste and the open air. There he is. You can see some of the, this is one of the motors with the corrosion. Here's a, a little bigger view. The concrete wall contains the, the raw waste that's coming in, and there's a, a large open basin there that the lifts then lift that waste and start the process. We are proposing to not rehabilitate those screw pumps, and I'll, I'll get into it a little bit, but these are 45-year-old, what are called Chicago pumps. They're in what, what's called a dry well operation. There's actually three of them there. One's been removed. There's one here. Okay, Chris, how do I get that off? I can just turn off this. Okay, so, again, we have these two screw pumps. They're, they're in need of rehabilitation. As a staff, we have talked about some options. And what we're proposing is to, instead of rehabilitate the screw pumps, we're budgeting a minimal of $75,000 for each screw pump. As, as you see in your memo on page 121, those are Schreiber pumps. We would have to send those to Alabama. You have to hire a crane, pay shipping costs, send them to Alabama. They would have to disassemble the screw pumps, the screws and the flights, their large screw veins inside there. And they would have to identify the repair costs. And that would only be to rehabilitate those. That would not be replacement. What we're, what we're recommending is instead to go in the basement where you saw those three 45-year-old Chicago pumps and replace those out with new seven-and-a-half horsepower flight pumps. The, the three flight pumps would be high-efficiency flight pumps. We're very, we've used flight in the past. We're very satisfied with them and their management of raw wastewater. They would be, they would run on variable frequency drives. And we would most likely need two pumps at any one time with heavier flows. So we would be rotating the pumps as we do with most of our, our pumps in situations at the treatment plant. So they would be on automatic rotational basis to, to spread out their operating costs. The, so the two, the, the seven-and-a-half horsepower motor pumps would replace out the 25 horsepower. Now, again, they're going to be on variable frequency drives, so we're going to be reducing our power demand. The 25 horsepower motors on the screw pumps, one of those screw pumps is running 24 hours a day. Okay, that, it has to operate. It'll operate and continue to operate at the same speed if we, if we have more waste that comes into the treatment plant, it just pulls up more water. So there's no variable frequency to those drives. And we've estimated a power savings of $3,000 to $5,000 a year to go to this different If you look at, on page 122, so if you take the 2015 screw pump project of $75,000, which has been approved, and the 2016 screw pump rehabilitation, which is proposed for next year at 75,000, we've budgeted $150,000. As an alternate, we're proposing to purchase three flight pumps, and we would purchase the pumps ourselves to keep, we wouldn't pay tax on it and that. That would be about $57,000. We would purchase needed materials, pipes, valves, elbows and such, at about 20,000. And then we have done quite a bit of work in putting this project together and have a quote from Sabal Mechanical out of Fond du Lac for installation labor at about $22,000, bringing the total cost of this project to $98,940. So we would expect to save about $51,000 with this alternative. We would apply for Focus on Energy Grant. We would get a prescriptive grant. We would automatically get a grant for the variable frequency drives. And we again would see $3,000 to $5,000 a year in power savings. Now, the reason to go to this switch over, this modified plan is, it's pretty simple. We obviously save capital costs. It's going to, it's going to save capital. We're going to reduce power use, so that'll be an ongoing savings. We will actually maintain the screw pumps, leave them in place. We won't rehabilitate them, we will still operate them. And will actually provide us more pumping reliability down the road. The screw pumps are on the backup generator as will the new flight pumps be on the backup generator. But we won't put dollars into those screw pumps to operate them, but we will have them available to us. And it's not only, I mean, it's reliable backup capabilities until they have substantial problems with them. And then we would make a decision at that point what we would do. But the three pumps that we're proposing, standing alone, will meet the needs for our wastewater treatment plant. It's designed properly, providing adequate pumping and will save some money. So what, we put this together because we think it's really a better plan all around, taking into account all these different aspects. I did hand out tonight a some information here. So what we're looking at is this year, total capital we approved in the 2015 sewer budget, the one screw pump rehabilitation. We also have approved an aeration blower replacement, which is another project at $75,000. So that's in this year's approved budget. However, we are just starting to look at that project. We have some engineering analysis to do. There's some decisions that need to be made. We're not ready to make a recommendation on that. We won't be ready this year to proceed with that project. So there is money budgeted, $150,000 budgeted in this year's capital in the sewer department. What we're recommending then is to proceed with this flight pump installation to eliminate the future second screw pump project and to evaluate the aeration blower replacement project for future capital for consideration next year or the following year, depending on how that project proceeds. I know that's a mouthful, Mayor, but I'm open to questions. Jeff Dyer, our wastewater superintendent is here also. And he can answer questions as well if anybody has a question.
So the plan, John, again, is to, is to do this replacement sometime in 2015?
Yeah, we would expect, there's some, there's some work. The city crews are going to be able to do some of this work. Not only our wastewater employees, but street department. We'd be looking at installing some outdoor piping that's needed, that our crews can do. We would need to proceed with that this summer, I mean, during the construction season. We would then order the pumps, order materials, those would come in the fall. I mean, this would be a fall installation, fall to early winter project for us.
Okay.
But it would be a 2015 expenditure.
Okay.
Okay.
One of the things in looking at this purchase is that I am in receipt of the draft financial statements for 2014. And the sewer fund right now as of the end only has about 248,000 of reserve, equipment reserve funds available. It is planning in the 2015 budget to increase that with $231,000 worth of the fixed costs that John was talking about previously for that reserve fund to start growing. The problem I'm having is that the reserve fund only amounts for less than 2% of what your net fixed assets are for the plant. The continuation of using that fund of cash to start buying equipment might be fine, but you're having an issue with cash flow again with this fund. And also when you look at the city as a whole for cash flow purposes, this starts to become, where, where do I have money available to pay bills? So my recommendation with this would be, is to use the 75,000 that would be part of next year's budget and only start the project in the fourth quarter. Start using the forced labor from the city staff to start purchasing the equip, the equipment and doing the digging and that kind of stuff, more of the prep work. But I wouldn't, if you wanted to approve the project to start going forward because there is a time lag for doing it for cash flow, I wouldn't have a problem, but we probably would be straddling both years of, two years of budgets. So I would say fund 75,000 of this project out of this year's budget before I would fund another 75,000 or the balance of this project next year. Only so that we don't start again eating away at our reserves to start looking at building a cash flow, especially for this utility. This utility is going to need more capital in the, in the future. So you want to start building cash reserves and so that, you know, you have some investment income. The investment income's minimal in this fund. So you want to start saving in essence for this fund. So my recommendation is if you approve this project, that 75,000 of it only be funded this year and the balance be budgeted for and funded in the next year. And talking to John today that the timing would be probably within reason. We wouldn't get billed by the contractor until the, until the first quarter of 2016. So I think going forward, I think the, the timing of projects needs to be weighed as well as how the funding of these projects are. This is a cash project, so you aren't borrowing for it. But this fund has only at the end of 2014, 360,000, sorry, $360,000 in the bank in essence of real cash liquidity. So I think we have to, and if you think of it, then I've only got another longer in term investments. I believe there's some CDs out there that I don't have that availability unless I take it out. So I think going forward, we have to make sure that we have projects funded correctly based on the cash flow of what's coming into the utility. So I think it's nice that we're going to pay cash for this project, but the timing has to be that we maybe start it in 2015, but fully fund the balance in 16's budget. When we see whether or not there's other impacts within the fund during the year, even though the increase in the fixed fees coming from the district and, and the sewer utility are going to help start this reserve to start building up for the future.
Okay. So John, again, just remind me, the total cost of this project now goes from 150 to 98,940, am I right?
That's correct, that's correct.
So what Kathy's recommending is, is that we just, we use $75,000 in the fourth quarter of this year and then the remaining amount, which would be $23,940, get paid in the first quarter of 2016? And that's right, okay. And that's, you think that's okay?
Yes, that would allow us to purchase the pumps. That would allow us to purchase pipe material. And we would then work with the contractor for a payment of his bill. $22,000 could be paid then after January 1st. So it would be a fall project for us.
Okay. Everybody understand then what's going on here? Are we okay with this?
I just, I'm really, again, I'm confused about this. Is this going to come up every single time we want to do something that's budgeted for this year? I'm sorry, this doesn't make any sense.
Well, I don't, I'm not sure what you're asking. What are you asking?
John's going to have a 50,000 or $75,000 project he's not going to do this year, right?
That's correct.
The aeration blower. So we take $75,000 off of your budget, okay? That frees up $75,000. I don't understand if we were, but we budgeted an additional $75,000 for something we're not going to do. Why can't we take the money out of there? I don't get this.
Okay, well, it's not that we can't do it, okay? And I'm just, I'm just listening to what Kathy's saying to me is, her concern is that the cash flow is going to be too low for us to maybe pay our monthly expenses at a, when, when they peak it sometimes. You want to keep a certain amount of reserves in there to cover your day-to-day expenses.
I understand that.
Okay, and that's all, that's all she's asking us to do is to put off paying for this until that we have more reserves in, in the account. I think it's still going to be a 2015 project. The West screw pump was scheduled for 2016. So actually we're accelerating the project, but we did have a large cash funded project in 2014 that clarifier cover. That was hundreds of thousands of dollars. So that project really did draw down our cash.
Well, yeah.
Right?
If you look at what we were talking about earlier on the sewer ordinance, we've also budgeted 240-some thousand dollars in our variable operating accounts as cash buildup, reserve buildup. In addition to what Kathy's talking about and in also addition, we're making payments as is the Chain Lake Sanitary District on a monthly basis to the tune of 200-some thousand. So all these are adding up to hundreds of thousands of dollars by the end of the year that we will have. I understand Kathy being conservative, I get that. And I think that we can still proceed with the project. We can do that and it will, we'll have to delay it a little bit. We want to get our, our summer construction work out of the way. And we need to order the pumps, you know, because there's a lead time on that. So if we can take delivery and make that payment, you know, September, October and work with the contractor, we'll have to ask, we'll have to time it to delay his bill till a January payment. It's the same as a December payment. It's just what year it's going to be on the books because there's money that is budgeted that's coming into that reserve account.
Have you talked to the people and asked them if they would accept payment after the first?
Well, we, we wouldn't start the project until that time. They're not going to start working in July. We would have to wait, we'd have to wait for September, October timeframe for them to begin their work.
This is the second project in a row that we're dealing with money that's budgeted. And I just, I'm concerned, I'm very concerned. You know, I, I thought we put a lot of work into this.
Into?
Into the budget.
Again, the one, the first project we were talking about was a, was a borel. This one is actually a cash and this one's coming out of the sewer fund. And the other one was coming out of the street department, which was a, which is a general fund dollar amount. So they are completely two different projects. And Deb, if you want to go ahead and pay the whole amount in 2015, I'm sure Kathy will find a way to make sure that we, we pay for it. But when we did the budget, okay, we, we based it on, we thought there was going to be enough cash flow to pay for that. And all they're saying is, is just let's wait till the end of the year when, when the amounts that the city and the, and the sanitary district under our new contract build up. I mean, they're paying on a monthly basis. We're, we pay our sewer bills on a monthly basis. We don't pay them on January 1st of every year so that we have a huge dollar amount there. Just asking for that amount to get increased so that at the end of the year. That's all I get from what she's asking to do. And I, you know, I can't argue with that. I haven't analyzed the cash flow, but I appreciate what she's saying. And I think it's, if she has some concerns, I think we can, we can get the project done still in 2015. And if the contractor says, no, I'm not going to take the money until, I'm going to take the money upfront or, or I want it by December, well, then we'll be back here and we'll talk about it at that time. Okay?
Okay.
Thanks, John. I do appreciate that you found a way to save about $51,000 and it looks like it's actually going to improve how things are handled at the wastewater treatment.
Yeah, and I, and I want to give credit to the wastewater staff, Jeff and his staff. You know, it's something we kind of joked about early on in the project and they put their nose to the grindstone and figured out a way that brought forth these improvements. And I think really puts us in a better situation.
Good. All right, so what we'd be looking for is to approve this project for a 2014, or 2015 start with $75,000 being paid out of the 2015 budget and then the remaining amount, which would be 23,940, would be paid in the first quarter of 2016. We have a motion.
I'm sorry if I interrupted you. I'd like to get, if we could get action on the bullet points that I have here, if that's possible.
Okay.
Purchase three flight pumps from Xylem. We have a price quote in the packet from them, an amount not to exceed 56,700. Purchase the list of materials that are needed, pipes, valves, materials, other materials from Sabal Mechanical for $20,220. And approve a contract, and that's in your packet as well, with Sabal Mechanical for insulation labor of $22,020. And that would be for an amount not to exceed 98,940, if that would be acceptable.
Okay, so I summarized it, but you're, you're explaining how you came up with the 98,940. Okay. Does everybody understand still? Okay. Are we, I'm, we're looking for a motion here. It was a recommendation by Public Works Director.
I will move that we pay the first two bullet points this year. It's a little more than 75,000, 76,900 or something. As long as Sabal Mechanical is okay with postponing their payment until 2016.
Okay, you heard the motion?
Second.
We have a motion by Dave Peterson, second by Gillian Peterson, that we approve of the project with 76,000, say it again to me, Pete, 76,000. Comes in 2015 and the remaining amount would be paid then in the first quarter of 2016. Any discussion?
John, did we look for other bids for these flight pumps and also the installation?
We looked at alternate bids from Crane Engineering, who we've done quite a bit of work with in Appleton area. And the flight pumps are something we can't purchase from them. They have, they have an alternate pump. We don't feel it's as good of a product and we're, we feel comfortable that we need to specify the flight pumps. So that is, we are purchasing from Xylem, who is the distributor of flight. We have other flights in operation with the city.
What about the installation?
Crane, Crane, Crane as well, Crane Engineering. We receive quotes from and Sabal is below that price-wise.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion? If not, Sandy will call the roll.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Gillian Peterson?
Aye.
Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
John Lockwood?
Aye.
Scott Pachatsky?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Ann Debenski?
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
Go ahead, Mayor.
Thanks, John. Moving on then, we have the recruitment and selection of the upcoming DPW City Engineer vacancy. Henry?
Thanks, Mayor. My stuff begins on page 127. There's really just two documents, a kind of an overview document and then- And then, I did fail to put in the draft job description in your packet. I do apologize for that. I did notice it late this morning. Hopefully, some of you saw it via email. Again, we can go over it real quickly. There's just very, very few changes. What I'm hoping to do with you tonight is just briefly go through the, the process to recruit and select John's replacement. This is a department head position. We've done this fairly recently, so a lot of this format you're gonna see is very similar. There's really just a couple actions I would be requesting of the council would be to approve the timeline to select and the budget, and then the, the small changes to the, the job description. If you could please just turn to the one, page 127, and I'll go very quickly through the overview sheet. I'm sure you're gonna have some questions, so I'm trying to address what I would anticipate your, your thinking on this vacancy. While it's vacant, I have talked with John and the mayor a little bit about how we handle the infield kind of coordination, and feel that Roger Hanson could be sort of our eyes and ears in the field to kinda help with ongoing coordination of efforts with this particular road project we're doing. We do have a consulting engineer that will be on-site on the project. So, if there's some engineering issues there, Roger will get some help. I'll principally serve as just sort of the administrative person. If something has to happen administratively over the next four or five months, I'll, I'll handle that. I anticipate meeting with the division heads once every couple, three weeks or four weeks just to keep on top of their activities. I do believe, in talking with Brennan and John, that there may be projects that come across our desk, some issues that might pop up where we're gonna want to get a little help with a consulting engineer. I have talked with Phil Ramblin of Omni, and they're interested in performing that service. And I did get a draft agreement that I'd like to bring forward next month. But it would be, or, excuse me, next meeting, but it would be on an as-needed basis. A little bit about the process. I would coordinate it. This is the mayor's appointment that the council needs to review and ratify. Mr. Smith is considering the individuals on the panel, but he would appoint them. We, I very, very much plan on having a good candidate to bring to you. But it's, the reality is, we have a pool of candidates. That's our pool of candidates. And if we're not happy with, with that, and we might have to go back to the well second time, there might be a need to maybe hire a headhunter or something. Well, we can cross that bridge. But I had the thought in my mind, I put it down on paper. I did reach out and got a budgeted number, so that, that's, that's the number you see. The one thing about John's position, he is funded through three funds. So, the cost to do this can be allocated. We typically allocate his cost fifty percent to general, twenty-five to water and sewer. There will be a sick leave, accumulated sick leave and vacation payout. And you can see it there with the fringes. It's about seventy-four thousand dollars. Again, that cost gets split among three funds. And it works out that the cost of the general fund is about four months of, of pay. So, just the normal process to fill this position. We should be okay in terms of our budgeted numbers to fund that payout just through our operating budgets this year. I've kind of identified a number of outlets to advertise for the position. There are a couple of chapters I found out about in talking with John that are on this list, some engineering-related groups. Wisconsin Rural Water was a good one that we're actually a member of, and we can advertise through there. But a lot of these outlets are free. One I failed to put on here, I think we should run an ad locally in the paper. Probably of all these, I wouldn't do the Career Builder just because of the, the cost. It's double, three times every other outlet. But you can kinda get a, a sense. Have reached out to engineering schools and have contacts there to see if there's some non-traditional students that might fit the bill. We, I think our ideal candidate has some years of experience. The job description requires it. You can see the timeline, assuming everything's a-go tonight. I would begin tomorrow. We would begin interviews the week of June 8th and proceed through the process. I do wanna make a correction on the timeline. The common council, I would be planning to bring this to a conclusion, and the mayor making a decision for you to decide on Tuesday, July 21st, not the 14th. An error on my part. And then, allowing a couple months' transition time, I would expect the candidate to be on-board by September 1. You can see kind of what, why we will put out as the recruitment packet. And then, there's the budget. I've anticipated about five hundred to a thousand in advertising, upwards to about fifteen hundred in interview expenses. It's been our policy to cover costs of the second-round candidates only. If we might have an out-of-state candidate, or someone from further out in the state that might have a night over, or to cover some travel. And then, the consulting engineer, again, this is just a range. It could be much less than five thousand. It's just kinda project-driven. And again, we do have consultant fees budgeted in the Water and Sewer Fund and, and the, the general fund. So, again, I thi- I think this cost can be absorbed in those line items. So, all, all set a range of probably six thousand to twelve thousand five hundred in expenses. So, that's kind of a bit of the process timeline budget. Are there any questions on that?
Well, we have an outside person on the panel.
Well, actually, the mayor and I talked, and I have reached out to Dean Steingraber with the Highway Department, County Highway Department. This position's gonna interact a lot with, with the county. So, we thought that would be good to kinda get, get their take on it. And, and I reached out to Dean, and he's agreed to do it. I don't know that Mayor's finalized the, all of the other candidates at this point, but Dean's an outsider.
Okay.
Henry, will the salary be based on maybe our chosen candidate's years of experience? Or how, are we gonna come in less than John, or more, or is that kinda how?
Well, I think that's all driven by the candidates and all. But the salary range for that position is seventy-seven eight hundred to one thousand and one hundred, hundred and one thousand one fifty. So, I feel like the range is very competitive, and we should, we should be able to draw some, some interested candidates. And again, I, I don't know if I should say this or not, but I was at a professional meeting three weeks ago, and next to finance directors, TPW, DPWs are very difficult positions to fill. And this was from a workshop from headhunters. But I like a challenge. And I think we're hitting the market at a really good time because it's in the spring/summer. So, if we can attract some, maybe some younger professionals with families, being able to move over the summer is really gonna facilitate that. If they're looking for a job, they're probably gearing up to, you know, look right about this time. So, I'm really kinda encouraged by that. I think we're gonna be drawing candidates in the middle of summer, right? There's no better time to show off LaPac and what we have here than at, at this time of year. So, I think it's much better than trying to do it in the middle of winter, I would say. So, that's, that is the selection process and timeline and a budget. And then, on the job description, very briefly, there are not any major changes that I'm recommending. You can see there are strokes, strike-throughs to delete and just hold for additions. One thing for me, as I was thinking about this, I think the position summary calling out the, the functional areas in Public Works is important. So, when a candidate reads the job description, they know what's involved in Public Works. I think we've got a fairly typical arrangement. But the facility maintenance is a little bit of a new thing that we brought up under that department. So, I wanted to call that out, so that was clear. There's a couple references to some old committees that are functioning, the Industrial Development Corp., and then the Board of Public Works. And then, just to clarify on the City Engineer piece, one thing we, I did hear in that workshop was to, if you require the City Engineer certification, you're really gonna limit your pool. Our job description implied that it was highly desired and not required, but I just called that out a little bit more on the qualifications. And I think that's all for the job description. Those are not too bad changes, I don't believe. Just kinda more probably grammatical than anything.
Henry, we discussed a few meetings ago about creating a Board of Public Works. Do you want to include whatever that's gonna be called, or would you wanna revise this after that?
Well, I, I, that would be, be up to you. But I was thinking that was the more, that was a standing committee. And I think this was kinda conceived, this new effort maybe, as more of an advisory that, you know, wouldn't be the same. It wouldn't have maybe all council members on it like the old Board of Public Works had. So, that's sort of.
I just wondered where we were in that, in that thinking.
Maybe would it, oh, sorry, Deb, you didn't.
Yes.
Would it be advisable if we do find a candidate with maybe not as many years of experience as John has to reconvene a committee to help, you know, guide this while, if, if the person maybe only has four or five years, and he's our best guy? I, I don't know if that's something to think about, I guess, to have a Public Works Committee to help kinda guide the situation for a while, anyway.
Well, that's our, our minimum requirement, three to five years of experience.
Just something to think about, I guess. You get a lot of discussion at those committees, and it might, 'cause we're losing a lot of experience with, you know, years of experience with John. And if we don't get it back, we might, more, more heads in the discussion might be better.
Yeah, I, I really do think if your top candidate dictates certain actions, you should, council should consider them. Like, in the past, we've had a mentoring situation, a few buckets of dollars for that. And I think it was very positive, and it worked out very well. So, yeah, I think depending on your candidate, your top candidate.
Any other questions or discussion on the process that we're gonna go through to hire a new Director of Public Works? Thank you. Thank you, Henry. You're up again, I guess you're.
Well, could I, is everybody, could I have a, is everyone okay with the budget and the timeline and the job description changes? 'Cause I'll, this job description change will go up, be part of the recruitment packet.
Do we have money for this?
Well, these are, I've just identified the costs.
Yeah.
And we're gonna, you know, again, being the position is funded by a couple funds. I think we're gonna be fine
Okay.
with the advertising and any kind of professional services we're gonna need.
Okay.
Okay. Henry had, in your packet, discussion on how the recruitment was gonna be handled and how we're gonna select somebody. He'd like us to approve that if we could, which would include the budget that's in there. Again, those amounts would be paid for by not hiring someone until those costs are, are, are filled by keeping it vacant. We have a motion?
I'd make that in form of a motion.
Thank you, Paul.
Second.
We have a motion by Hagan, second by Fenske, that we approve of the recruitment and selection for the upcoming DPW City Engineer vacancy. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. All right. Next, we have Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation. This is for a grant request. Brennan is not here tonight. He's out for this until tomorrow. So, we're gonna have Henry ten-shit for him tonight.
This, you can see, and see Brennan's memo on page 130, who kinda gives an overview of the, the action required or requested. For staff, we need your approval to proceed with submitting a grant application. That's essentially the, the request before you. He's got a cover memo. And then, following a couple, three, four pages is an overview of the grant program. Now, one thing I wanna say about this is, last month, you authorized staff to pursue a grant, for the city to pursue a grant under the same program to help with the downtown planning, the concept plan. And we are gonna apply, the same kind of rules apply for the grant that we're applying for. What's before you tonight is generally referred to as an investment grant. And the city becomes the grantee. And then, we funnel the money to the ultimate recipient, recipient through a development agreement. What we're seeking tonight is to apply for the grant only. There is no guarantee it'll be awarded. If it is awarded, we'd come back with a grant agreement and some form of a development agreement to condition those funds. With us today are the Drakes, Tim and Michelle. And they've been sitting very patiently. Hopefully, you've learned a lot about city government and Archimedes. So, I really appreciate their patience. But I thought it'd be important for them to be here, explain what their vision is. One of the handouts that you got today is information on the project. This is the old Office Outfitters Building. It's been sitting vacant for five-plus years. The grant, you can see the grant eligibility requirements and what they fund. And this fits right in the wheelhouse. Significant downtown property. It's historic. So, I, I, I think, I think it meets the task. But you probably have more questions of me, of them than of me. So, I don't know if, if you'd like for them to present very briefly what their, their plan is for their project? Okay? Tim, Michelle?
Thank you for having us tonight. We're the current owners of Lucky Tree. It's a gift shop on North Main Street. And we've been there for four years. If you look at your handout that has the photos of the building at the top, we've called this the 100 North Main Restoration Project. The proposal is from Brookstone Woods LLC, which is LLC we created. The owners of that are Tim and myself, and Nancy Ross also as an investor. The proposal is to restore this familiar landmark, the IOF Building at 100 North Main Street, Wapaka. And you may know it better as, as the Office Outfitters Building or the Lighthouse Building. Constructed in 1889, the building is listed on the federal and state historic registries, and is an important example of commercial vernacular architecture. Located right in the heart of Wapaka, the building has been vacant for nine years. There's a main storefront facing Main Street. And then, there's a secondary storefront attached that faces Fulton, which is also empty. The main level has water damage from frozen pipes. Upstairs, three of the four apartment spaces are currently uninhabitable. A brief history, this structure was built in 1889 as a fraternal meeting hall for the IOF, the Internal Order of Odd Fellows. And for many years after that, it was the home of Holly Furniture Store. The IOF Building housed the city's first radio station, boasts the city's first elevator. In approximately 1926, Holly discontinued this furniture line and exclusively became a funeral home. In the 30s, the building was used as a grocery store called the Fruit Store. And over the years, businesses like Lighthouse and Office Outfitters have also used this location. Brookstone Woods LLC is working with former Wapaka resident and architect Terry Martin, and also legacy architecture of Sheboygan. This is a group that specializes in historic preservation and restoration. And we're working with them as consult, they're consulting us. with them as consult, they're consulting us. Preliminary plans have already been drawn up to restore this main storefront to become the new location of Lucky Tree, our business. And then there's a second storefront that faces Fulton, and that would be another shop. The upper level would be transformed into three upscale apartments, it's currently four spaces, and like I said, only one of them right now is even usable, so this would be turned into three nicer spaces. Rockwood Home Builders of Plover will carry out the plans, they're known for their success remediating and restoring difficult properties. This one isn't really terribly difficult, but they have been through a lot of challenges with the projects that they've worked on. The project will include removing the main entrance and awning from a previous remodel to bring it in line with the historic character of the building. So the current awning and opening is kind of a little bit more modern, it was put in possibly in the 60s or early 70s, and we would be removing that in order to have it fit in with how it originally looked. In accordance with all historical guidelines, the woodwork, the wall, ceiling, and floor materials would be repaired when possible and replaced when needed. The basic benefits of this restoration project, the main one, I believe, is economic development. It would create two centrally located storefronts and three upscale apartments in the second level, and this will definitely add to the revitalization of downtown. Jobs will be created for the construction work, and also long-term employment for the retail shops. Residents in the apartments will add to the tax base and then thereby frequent nearby businesses by living in that area. To fit in with the downtown Opaaca reconstruction project, the restoration of this building will fit into the plans of that, and the project can work as a good example to encourage further economic investment and other property renovations. It is a high-profile location, and we feel that once restored, the building would be a cornerstone for a beautiful and historic public space. It's a large backdrop for events like Strawberry Fest and Arts on the Square, and it would really add to the vibrancy of downtown Opaaca. It's a responsible reuse of existing infrastructure, the historic restorations are effective method of sustainability and conservation of resources, and finally, increase of the property value and tax revenue. After the project's completed, the building will increase in value greatly, this will also have a positive effect on surrounding structures, tax revenue will increase with the addition of downtown business, housing, and commerce. At the bottom of the page, it mentions what the grant is. The Community Development Investment Grant is through Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation. We learned of this grant through Nalita Burr, who has been working with the city for the reconstruction projects and things going on for downtown, and the grant would be for 25% of the total investment. Our deadline is April 17th, they have really encouraged us to apply for that date, primarily due to the bud, state budget changes that'll be happening, and they're concerned that there may not be any of these grants available after this date. The grant is submitted then through the city, Brennan's putting that together for us. Financing has been arranged for part of this project, but the purchase of the building is contingent upon the state approving this grant for us, so it, the project would not happen without the grant. Do you have any questions for us?
Understand, so what Henry said before, and what we're doing is, is just allowing Brennan to go ahead and apply for this grant.
Right.
And if we were to receive this grant, then it would be back at the council level for you to vote on accepting that grant, if, if we did receive that. So, there's nothing out of our pocket at this time, except for some labor from Brennan to, to do that, and...
Correct.
I think a motion we approve would be Brennan's ability to apply for this grant.
Second. Okay, we have a motion by Lockwood, second by Hackett, that we approve the application of this grant that Brennan will put forth. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried, good luck.
Thank you very much.
All right, let's move on, then we have a resolution number 1351, this is authorizing the city's financial institutions. Kathy?
Thank you, Mayor. In your packet, I provided a brief memo and a draft new investment policy for the city. During the audit, I reviewed the city's current investment policy and came across that we had never had a resolution authorizing the financial institutions that I can use to invest money in. So, I've updated the policy and provided the resolution that's necessary, that allows me to invest funds in these businesses, in these banks, which is what we currently have. We have no brokerage firms or financial advisors for investments, so in the future, if we would come through and decide to do that, we would change this, but on an annual basis, the council should approve what financial institutions I can put the money in. So, the financial, the investment policy is just pretty much industry standard and government, municipalities our size, it allows for collateralization of 102% of our, our investments. It also requires me to look at the statuses of the banks on a bi-annual basis, and it just brings us into more compliance and recommended practices of government finances. So, if anybody has any questions, but we should really have a resolution on which institutions we can put our money with.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions of Kathy on this resolution?
I do.
Yeah.
Are these located, Farmer State, obviously, Opaaca, I'm assuming First National is Opaaca?
Correct.
Okay. Community First Bank, is that...
We have a $1,000 CD for the cemetery that we must have, that just keeps rolling over as part of a trust for up the cemetery lot.
Is that local?
Community First is a, is a state, Wisconsin State Bank, it's not a Opaaca bank.
Okay.
But it is a state bank.
Okay.
Not the credit union.
Right.
Not the credit union.
Okay.
Okay, anybody else?
Make a motion to approve the resolution number 1351.
A motion by Lockwood. Second by Jillian Peterson, that we approve of resolution number 1351, authorizing the city's financial institutions. Any discussion? If not, Sandy will call the roll.
Paul Mayo?
Didn't know what he was doing.
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Jillian Peterson?
Aye.
Deb Fenske?
Aye.
John Lockwood?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky?
Aye.
And Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
All right, thank you. We're on to letter K, which is the approval of memorandum of understanding with CAP Services for the Oz Eco Park Project. Aaron, we have another...
Thank you, Mayor. First, I would like to go through the actual memorandum of understanding, which is in your packet, starts on page 159 is the memo. As you guys know, we've discussed this in a few different meetings, this memorandum of understanding was requested to be brought forward before any actual approval of construction on the education center started out at Oz Park. And I just want to highlight a few things in this memorandum of understanding and what it's kind of telling you. The services rendered by the city of Opaaca include work with CAP Services and local partners in planning, development, and promotion of the Oz Park and all of its phases, maintain the current park amenities, including grass cutting, trail maintenance, signage, and parking area maintenance to exceptional standards. Services rendered by CAP Services include raise all funds needed to complete construction phases and additional components of the Oz Park improvements without the use of taxpayer dollars, complete construction of the open air shelter education center, boardwalk and amphitheater as these projects get approved through city council. As far as financial obligations of each, city of Opaaca agrees to provide the following financial material and labor resources in respect to the project. No city funds will be allocated to the project with the exception of possibly using dollars from the Oz Property Fund only if approved by the Oz Property Committee and city council. And then B just talks on CAP Services agrees to provide the following resources, 100% of all financial obligations covering labor, equipment, and material will be covered through grant writing and fundraising by CAP Services Fresh Start Program. So that's the memorandum, those are the key points of the memorandum of understanding. This memorandum of understanding would be a five-year agreement, it's in no way a legally binding document, but it represents a partnership between CAP Services and the city of Opaaca, which is obviously the collaboration that would make this Eco Park a possibility. Secondly, I want to address some of the concerns that Russ Buckwitz had come up here earlier in the meeting, which seems like a little while ago now, but I do want to speak on those, as I did speak with Russ and Kari today, and actually, Kari and I were out at the site together and discussed some of them as well. First of all, the location of the larger structure, which is the education center that we have been talking about, he said he felt like it'd be a visual deterrent, and he's, he's been out there, he's seen where the stakes are for this center, and they are not in the correct spots as of now. I got an email from Cliff from CAP Services, on Friday, I was out of the state shortly after and was not able to get to see where those are today. Those are in no way permanent, we would move those, I guess, further to the east and to the north, as shown on here. If you look where that, kind of where the orange represents the education center, where the stakes currently are, it is shifted to the west and to the south, which cuts off that path, and the southwest corner stake is actually right on the edge of the marsh, not in marshland, but close enough to where we wouldn't want it there. So, Cliff and I have set up a meeting for Friday to discuss moving those, if that, in fact, is the final location, and it would be moved, like I said, to the, to the northeast to allow for foot traffic to, to pass through there and not kind of cut that, cut that off. We are working with a little bit of difficulty there, there's, as you can see, there's not a lot of space, we've got a 25-foot setback that we've got to abide by from that blue line that's to the north, so we're, we want to make sure we do that. If we have to move it further east to do that, we will do so. And then actually, when we were on site today, Kari had mentioned another location that we have not yet discussed as an Oz Committee, or between CAP Services or city staff, and her and Russ came up with this, and it's not marked on this map, but you can see on the corner of Constance Road and Highway K, there's that triangle of open space that you can see, there is more space there. And that, as we stood out there, is something that I'm going to talk to Cliff about, because it, it has a nice overview of the marsh, and it could be, could be a good location for that, if we decide that's the best way to go. Now, a couple of things that we might have to consider there is that, that is off a county highway, or a county highway there, on County K, and the setbacks for county highways are a little more, so we'd be talking 75 feet from the center line of that highway, which I know it looks bigger in this map, but we'll see how that affects that area moving forward. And then the setback off of Constance Road would be 63 feet from, from the center line. Thank you. Oh, I'm gonna have to put my thing in again. So, those are, were two of the concern, actually, I guess, a concern and a suggestion on Russ and Kari's part, and I, I thought that suggestion, suggestion was a valid suggestion, and I know we have another Oz Committee member in here, in Scott Pritchatsky, and I know he's hearing this kind of for the first time as well. I guess, in my opinion, I would still be looking for approval to approve that memorandum of understanding, and then I think this can be worked out, you know, if we were, if we decide that that location, where it currently is, is the best location, by moving it and allowing foot traffic through there, you know, that, we're talking about moving it a matter of, you know, 20 feet, 30 feet, to make that work, and then, actually, not only Cliff and I will be meeting, but of, Russ and Kari have expressed interest in meeting on Friday to look at that new location as well. There was another concern, and I think you guys have seen pictures of the fill that was filled by the test section of the boardwalk, and this is something that we discussed early on in this project about applying for permits as far as that, that walkway goes, and one thing that we communicated with CAP Services was, the DNR does not require a permit as long as you're not augering down and filling that hole where you're going to be putting those posts. They didn't do that, but I, we, first time I saw it was today, they did put that fill in there, and that would require a DNR permit, so that's something that we're going to be discussing on Friday and asking them to remove until a permit has been passed through. So, I believe that addressed some of those questions. Like I said, I, I think the memorandum of understanding just kind of represents an agreement between the city and CAP Services on moving this project forward, and I think some of this stuff can be done at a staff level. I will tell you that if we did decide to move it to that other section off of Constance Road and Highway K, that's something that you guys would definitely be hearing about, we'd be talking about that at another meeting. If we're gonna move it 30 feet northeast, that's maybe something I'll mention, but we won't get too, too far into that. I do want to mention too, I know last time that we brought a budget for this project, CAP Services was about $1,000 off, said I felt confident that we could go forward with them covering that, they actually have received $20,000 of the $25,000 grant that they were being interviewed for, so they have surpassed that by about $19,000. Any questions?
Let's make sure that, Aaron, that you keep Scott, and maybe Scott can even take some time on Friday if you're gonna meet, meet with you too as chairman of the Oz Property, that would be great.
I mean, no one would time and see if I...
Absolutely, we'll talk right after this.
Take it, yeah.
Sounds good.
Okay, so you heard what Aaron's request was, is that we, we still move forward with the approval of the memorandum of understanding for this project, knowing that there'll probably be some things that need to still be worked out, but again, Aaron feels confident that we can get those worked out. So we'd be looking for a motion to approve this memorandum of understanding. So move. Second. Motion by Dave Peterson, second by Hagan, that we approve of the memorandum of understanding with CAP Services for the Oz Eco Park Project. Any discussion? If not, Sandy will call the roll.
Jillian Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
John Lockwood?
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky?
Aye.
Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Deb Fenske?
Aye.
And Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
All right, thanks, Aaron. You're still up here, though, we got shoreline restoration contract approval, this is for the South Park Phase Two project.
Yes, thanks again. This memo is on page 163, three of your packet, part of the South Park Phase Two, as Mayor said, we're working with a couple contractors on shoreline restoration. This was a part of the grant that we applied for and received, and it was budgeted to spend $10,500 on this project. We have been in... We have been in communication with StanTech and Applied Ecological Services for doing a couple different projects. And these projects were actually specified by the DNR as we talked to them. And if you look in your packet, actually, the second proposal, it would be the Applied Ecological Services proposal, shows a good overhead map of the Lower South Park. I just want to talk on that just for a second. It shows the volleyball court area, which is circled. It also shows the drainage swale in Lower South Park that runs under the road there and all the way to Shadow Lake. That's a source of phosphorus. That's kind of a hotspot that gets dumped into that portion of the lake. The phosphorus allows for more algae growth, which you can see pretty clearly on that overhead view. This shoreline restoration would help mitigate some of that, those phosphorus levels. And that eventually, if you have more algae growth, that has to use oxygen when it dies in the fall and wintertime, which depletes the oxygen in the lake, which is bad for the fish. So that's kind of the grand scheme of what we're looking at doing here. StanTech and Applied Ecological Services were both recommended by the DNR. We've also been working with the friends of, of Mirin Shadow Lake. StanTech was able to meet with us and willing to meet with us on site to get a better idea of kind of exactly what we're looking for. This isn't a huge part of the Phase Two, probably actually, it is the smallest part of the Phase Two project. AES was not able to meet with us or not willing to meet with us. And I, we do feel comfortable with the StanTech proposal for the cost of nine thousand nine hundred ninety-five dollars. Things that will happen in the StanTech proposal are, are planning that can be used in the future for city staff and friends of Mirin Shadow Lake, as well as, we wanted to make sure that we actually got some stuff in the ground. We wanted to see some, some things that we can show as an educational portion. And we're not going to change the whole health of the lake at South Park just by doing it there. But if we can educate the rest of the, the landowners around the lake on, on what's beneficial to it, that's what we want to do. So a lot of that money is going into planting and restoring that volleyball court area. We've also contacted high school classes, and we have about twenty-five kids that are set to come any time in May to help with those plantings for about four hours. So I guess we're recommending that the contract for shoreline restoration in Phase Two get approved for StanTech for the amount of nine thousand nine hundred ninety-five dollars. Any questions?
Okay. You heard Erin's recommendation. Do we have a motion? Wow. Mayo, Paul Mayo made the motion. John Lockwood made the second that we approve of the shoreline restoration contract for StanTech for an amount not to exceed nine thousand nine hundred ninety-five dollars. Any discussion?
Erin, if, since the bids are so close, is there any, any difference that would, we'd want to take into consideration for a second?
Actually, the only difference would be that StanTech is actually giving us more feasible material than planning, and that's kind of what we were looking for. So if there's a difference, it's in favor of StanTech.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? If not, Sandy will call the roll.
John Lockwood.
Aye.
Steve Hackett.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Deb Fenske.
Aye.
Jillian Peterson.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
And Eric Olson.
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
All right. You're up again with the Phase Two decorative lighting.
Okay. We will move on to my memo on page one seventy-six, which covers our decorative lighting project at South Park. We've been working with a number of, of people, mainly Bauer Electric when we first started this project. This project, we budgeted sixty-three thousand dollars for. That was originally figured for about twenty poles and light fixtures. We feel like we can cover the area with twelve for the area that we do want to light. These lights are going to be LED lights on like a bronze finish pole. And we, what we decided to do is we decided to get prices on two separate things. We wanted to get prices on material costs separate from the labor costs. This will save us about a thousand dollars for directly purchasing it. We can save on sales tax that way. And you can see the prices that we got there. I think the specs for the materials are in your packet there as an attachment, but you can see those are all very close, and we expected that because they're specking or bidding the exact same fixtures and exact same poles. Viking Electric Supply, nineteen thousand two hundred ninety-six dollars was the lowest, and that's what we would recommend going with for that cost. And then we also bid out the labor costs separate, and we got three, three estimates for that. Bauer Electric, Bob Van Epp's Electric, and then Elm Star out of Kekana. Bauer Electric came in on the low end there with thirteen thousand three hundred ninety-five dollars. So this money is, is, like I said, it's, we're about thirty thousand dollars under what we budgeted, which is a good thing. I will tell you that we've reached out to, Henry and I have talked to our grant specialist out of Shawno. Some of that savings can be used on other projects that we're looking into right now. Our irrigation in the circle needs to be updated. It's way out of date, and we can't get replacement parts and anything like that. So that's a, we asked, and that is an eligible cost, and we're looking into pricing for that with some of these savings. These dollars that are spent on Phase Two are covered in donor money. And then the cash, the land donation, and then the cash that was set aside from the savings in Phase One, you can, as you remember, I believe it was twenty-one thousand two hundred twenty-nine dollars and a penny that we had in savings for Phase One. If you remember correctly, we were looking to actually budget twenty thousand dollars in our capital for Phase Two, and I think it was brought up on the floor here. It was, I believe, Alder Benfinski's idea to save that money for Phase Two projects. So that's the cash that would be being used for that. So I guess staff is recommending that we go with award of bids for material cost of Viking Electric Supply for nineteen thousand two hundred ninety-six dollars and labor cost of Bauer Electric for thirteen thousand three hundred and ninety-five dollars. Are there any questions on that?
I make a motion we approve the South Park Phase Two decorative lighting bid for those two companies not to exceed thirty-two thousand six hundred ninety-one dollars.
Second.
Motion by Lockwood, second by Fenske that we approve of this decorative lighting contract. Any discussion?
How did you determine that you did less light poles for the same?
Actually, just, I leaned on Tim Bauer for that. Kind of gave us some fixtures and said, this is what you can do it with. We actually had someone from Elm Star come out, and Tim prior, at that time, we didn't know if we were going to go with LED or, or not. Tim said, hey, I think we can get it done with twelve, and I rely on the expert for that, so.
Any other discussion? If not, Sandy will call the roll.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
John Lockwood.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Deb Fenske.
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky.
Aye.
Jillian Peterson.
Aye.
And Steve Hackett.
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
All right. Thanks, Erin. Moving on, we have license report number twelve sixty-eight. This is a taxi cab driver's license. We have one individual on there. We would need a motion to approve that.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Olson, second by Dave Peterson that we approve of the taxi cab driver's license, license report number twelve sixty-eight. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. Next, we have license report number twelve sixty-nine, which is a Class B fermented malt beverage license and Class C wine license for cronies of Wapaka LLC.
It's a change of agents.
Just a change, okay. That's why it's in yellow there, and I can read that? Yeah, okay. Thank you. All right. Okay. So they, they already have the license, they just have a new agent for that. I think there's actually new owners, aren't there, of that property? So.
I make a motion we approve license report twelve sixty-nine.
Okay. We have a motion by Hackett, second by Lockwood that we approve of license report number twelve sixty-nine. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. Communications recommendations of the mayor?
One more. Twelve seventy.
Okay.
That one's in yellow too, Brian.
That one's in yellow too.
Last page, just go to the bottom.
Sorry about that. Not that I'm in a hurry. I'm not, but. Okay. Next, we have license report number twelve seventy. This is operator license. These are bartender license. We have two individuals on there. We would need approval of these.
It's almost approved.
License report twelve seventy.
Second.
Okay. We got a motion by Lockwood, second by Dave Peterson that we approve of license report number twelve seventy. Discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. All right. We have nothing for discussion issues tonight. Communications recommendations of the mayor. I just wanted to thank John Lockwood for his years on the council. We appreciate that, and good luck to you.
Thank you. Thanks for Wapaka.
Okay. So we'd be looking for a motion to adjourn.
Mayor?
Oh, okay.
Sorry. Go ahead. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Oh, I just wanted to remind everybody, WNTV is celebrating their thirtieth anniversary this Friday, and eleven thirty to one o'clock in the studio.
Rotten. I think.
He told me pizza.
What was it, pizza?
I don't know.
It's food.
It's food.
Food will be there. John Edelbeck.
Yes. Two items. One is I did put a press release on your desk for the road construction project. If you have any questions, feel free to call Roger or Henry. We will be using Nixle, Facebook, and the website, and it'll be a little different, obviously, this year, but Josh will be working with Henry and Roger on that to get information out. It started, gas main work has started in Hillcrest, and you'll see some work up there. So if you have any questions, you know, feel free to contact myself or Roger or Henry. But we've got two really nice projects ahead of us this summer. And then River Ridge Trail Work Day, I used the biggest font I could on this. May 2nd, please come out and help out. It's three hours raking and shoveling wood chips in Swan Park, and lunch is included. So we'll get twenty-five, thirty people. We had disabled veterans out there last year. So anybody can come, any age, come on out and help out. Swan Park, May 2nd, nine to twelve.
Don't just show up for the food, though.
Friday you can.
Make a motion to adjourn?
I was going to wait for somebody else to do it this time. Okay. We have a motion by Lockwood.
Second.
Second by Fenske that we adjourn till our next regular scheduled meeting, which is Tuesday, April twenty-first, two thousand fifteen, at six PM. Subject to call. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. We are adjourned at eight forty-four PM. Thanks, everybody, for attending, watching. Have a great day.